Good evening. It is seven o'clock and this is the second regular city commission meeting for the month of September. We are in the commission chambers socially distanced and I'll call the meeting to order at this time. I'd like to introduce the people sitting in front of you and we're a little spread out, but first we have recording secretary Cassidy Ritz. Next is city attorney Randy Hayes on the opposite end from where he usually is. Next to him is Commissioner Selby from Zone One. Our deputy mayor and Zone Two Commissioner Troy Kent. To my left and your right Commissioner Susan Persis from Zone Three. Our Zone Four Commissioner Rob Littleton. And down in front, we have City Manager Joyce Shanahan. I don't see Claire Assistant. Okay. Good deal. And then I already announced Randy. And we have our two chiefs in the corner. To my left, your right, Fire and Police Rusty Severs and Jesse Godfrey. Thank you all for being here. For those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. At this time, if you would, please silence your cell phones and we'll have the invocation given by Pastor Shane Hargrave from Tomoka Christian Church.
Dear Heavenly Father Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here in freedom. We thank you for those that you've put in positions of leadership and we just pray for wisdom for them tonight, give them insight and help them to ask the right questions. God, we are so grateful for our first responders, our firefighters and our police officers who protect this community, who constantly run towards the danger when the rest of us tend to run away. Would you please continue to give them courage and God wisdom and keep them and their families safe? We ask that you would also take away any anxiety folks in here feel tonight, that they would sense your presence. And Lord, in the midst of this pandemic, we pray that you would give us wisdom as a people, as a city, that you would help us to know best how to help those who are the least fortunate and those who are struggling the most. God, we love you and are so grateful for your grace and the gifts that you've given to us. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our second budget hearing and I'll ask the city clerk to read item four A.
Resolution number 2020-125, a resolution establishing the final millage rates to be levied for fiscal year 2020-2021, directing certification, expressing legislative intent and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2020-125, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I don't have any cards. Just need a motion and a second.
Move approval. Second.
Any discussion? Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And per Florida statute, I'm required to state that the millage rate for the city of Ormond Beach necessary to fund the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget is 3.9068 mils. This rate is equal to the rolled back rate of 3.9068 mils. The debt service millage rates are 0.0310 for the 2003 general obligation bond sinking fund and 0.0930 for the 2010 general obligation bond sinking fund. Any comments that anyone or the commission would like to add regarding the tax rate or budget at this time? This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak or ask questions prior to adoption of the millage rate and budget? Again, I did not have any cards. Seeing none, I would ask for a motion and second to adopt the final operating millage rate of 3.9068 mils and the debt service millage rates of 0.0310 and 0.0930.
So moved.
Second.
Moved properly by Commissioner Selby, seconded by Commissioner Persis. The final operating millage of 3.9068 mils is equal to the rolled back millage rate. The resolution also includes adoption of the debt service millage rates of 0.0310 for the 2003 general obligation bond sinking fund and 0.0930 for the 2010 general obligation bond sinking fund. Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. The operating millage rate is set at 3.9068 mils, which is equal to the rolled back millage rate of 3.9068 mils and will move to four B.
Ordinance number 2020-44, an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the 2020-2021 fiscal year, beginning October 1st, 2020 and ending September 30th, 2021, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2020-44, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I just need a motion and second.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Colby, please call the vote to adopt the budget of $96,502,919.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And do I hear any objection to closing the public hearing? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. I do not have any cards for audience remarks. No one, no one from the public submitted audience remarks prior to the meeting, so we'll move to the approval of the minutes from the city commission meeting of September 9th, 2020. The minutes have been sent to the commission for review, posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions or corrections?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign and we'll show those passing approved unanimously. Now we are at the point of the meeting where we take up the consent agenda and the action proposed is stated for each item on the consent agenda. Unless a commissioner removes an item, no discussion on individual items will occur and a single motion will approve all items. Are there any commission members who wish to pull an agenda item?
Move approval, consent agenda?
Second.
Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And any commissioner wish to comment on any item on the consent agenda?
I'd like to comment on a couple of items. One of the ones that jumped out at me was the airport item C, $142,000 design services for taxiway delta. And typically, we, I think our city participation is five or 10% in this, but because of the CARES Act, it's 100% paid for by state and federal funds. Honestly, how in the world COVID-19 has anything to do with taxiway delta? I am having a hard time drawing the nexus. But if it saves our taxpayers, well, in the short run, if it saves our local taxpayers' money, I'm for it. And they were going to give it to somebody and I'd just soon have it come to Ormond Beach. That's one of the comments I wanted to make. There was a big increase in the insurance coverage, 15%, but I know that our staff and that Brown &amp; Brown is doing a good job and working that stuff as hard as possible. And I know that we've added some facilities that I'm sure has increased our liability. And I wanted to see, oh, and the final thing is item P, budget status report. We started the year with 23% in reserves. Our policy is 15% of our budget in reserves. We started with 23%, so we're 8% above at the beginning of the year. We are spending money on McDonald House, on the South Ormond Neighborhood Center and on the Nova Rec Center tennis courts lighting. And we're still going to have 20% or $6.5 million in reserves. So your city is in extremely good financial position, due in no small part to the leadership of City Manager Shanahan and our City Finance Director and staff, Kelly McGuire. So I just want to say thank you to all of their hard work to keep us in that position. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby. Commissioner Persis?
Yes, I just wanted to comment on seven A. I'm very excited that the South Ormond Nova Rec Center and Andy Romano Park are getting the new, I guess, slip resistant flooring that is going to go there. I think the first, that flooring that's there now was put in in 2007 and this flooring is basically slip resistant, chemically resistant. It's easy to clean. I think it'll be, kids can play on it with more, with less opportunity to get hurt. So I'm just really excited that that's going to happen at those two areas that are so popular here in Ormond Beach.
Amen. Anyone else? If not, we'll move to public hearings and I will open the public hearings and ask the clerk to read eight A.
Ordinance summer 2020-45, an ordinance approving the final plat of Pellicle Acres, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2020-45, read by title only.
Thank you. Colby, I do not have any cards. Just need a motion and a second.
I move approval of ordinance number 2020-45.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Eight B.
Ordinance number 2020-46, an ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map to change the designation of an 18.47 plus or minus acre real property located at 350 Clyde Morris Boulevard from Volusia County Urban Low Intensity ULI to the City of Ormond Beach Residential Office Retail, ROR, limiting the residential density to four units per acre and the floor area ratio FAR to 0.45, providing for public hearings and transmittal, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2020-46, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I'll ask Planning Director Stephen Spraker to speak on this item.
Good evening, Steve Spraker, City Planning Director. This is a request for a land use amendment based on annexation. The property is located on the screen along Clyde Morris Boulevard. This would be Hand Avenue and Clyde Morris, Aberdeen abuts the site. It's a total of 18.47 acres currently vacant with no improvements. So the existing land use allows both commercial and residential. In the transition to the city, one of the things we strive to do is make sure that the units per acre stay the same as they were in the county and the floor area ratio actually went down a little bit, but both items, the applicant consented to, they are conceptually looking at an assisted living facility and potentially a medical office, so they're still trying to work through site plan issues. The planning board did recommend approval of this land use amendment, seven to zero, on August 13th. After tonight's action, if approved, it would go on to the state agencies and Volusia County Growth Management and likely come back before the commission for final adoption on November the 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen? I do not have any cards on this, just need a motion and a second.
Move for approval ordinance number 2020-46.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Eight C.
Ordinance number 2020-47, an ordinance amending paragraph C, official zoning map of section 2-01, established of Article 1, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Official Zoning Map of Chapter 2, District and General Regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code. By amending the official zoning map to rezone certain real property totaling 3.42 plus or minus acres located at 40 Timber Creek Road from Volusia County RC Resource Corridor and A2 Agriculture to Ormond Beach SE Special Environmental, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2020-47, read by title only.
Thank you. And again, I'll ask Planning Director Stephen Spraker to speak on this item.
Good evening. This property was annexed from unincorporated Volusia County. It is an existing Volusia County stormwater pond. It is 3.42 acres. The purpose of this zoning map amendment is to make it consistent with the land use. City staff took it from Resource Corridor and Agriculture to Special Environmental. The existing use is a stormwater pond. There will always be a stormwater pond. The Special Environmental will ensure that. The county will maintain the pond, so there's no transfer of maintenance. The planning board recommended approval, six to zero, on June 11th. Staff has recommended approval and we're going to answer any questions.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen? I don't have any cards on this one, just need a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Eight D.
Resolution number 2020-137, a resolution authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a special exception regarding the proposed Ormond Memorial Art Museum and Gardens located at 78 East Granada Boulevard and being situated within the B4 Central Business Zoning District in the Downtown Overlay District, allowing alternative building signage totaling five building signs and a combined 206 plus square feet, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2020-137, read by title only.
Thank you. And once again, Planning Director Stephen Spraker.
So the site is located at Granada Boulevard in Halifax. This is the existing building and then there was an addition in 1998. The focus of the site is to go over the existing footprint, so not going into the gardens, but instead going on the existing property. This is the existing survey, so you can see the relationship of the building to the parking lot and to the gardens. This is the proposed, so again, they're going over the existing footprint. As part of the site plan is identified that the museum is looking for specialized signage, which our land development code allows, both in the wall signage section and in the Development Overlay Downtown Overlay District. So the signs are throughout the property. Sign one is 7Q square feet, which would be the museum logo. Sign two would allow a museum sponsor. Signs three, four and five are located along kind of the backside. So there's a museum sponsor again here, a museum logo of 18 square feet as sign four. And then finally, a temporary signage like a marquee of 36 square feet on the building. Staff found that it is consistent with the land development code. It's also consistent with our downtown master plan, which incurred a museum revitalization, which we're starting to see. So the planning board did recommend it. Staff is recommending approval and the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen? Commissioner Selby?
Stephen, is this special exception for the total square footage or the number of signs or both?
It's for both. They would be allowed two signs, so they're asking for five. And they're also asking for additional signage, the square footage.
And even though this property, it really borders on three streets, because it borders on seat and trail also. So a property that is on three streets can only have two signs?
Correct.
Wow. It's really tight.
Which is why you have the process to come before the city commission. If you have unique circumstances and especially in the downtown overlay district, the city commission can approve a redevelopment plan.
Yeah, okay. Well, I mean, I'm totally in support of this and frankly, I, you know, I'm excited about it. I think it's going to be a great addition to the downtown and this is not overkill at all. They're very attractive signage and it'd be great for the project.
Thank you. Commissioner, Deputy Mayor Kent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure, I wanted to have some comments. No questions for Stephen. Comments after we get a motion and a second.
And I would point out, on behalf of the applicant, the director Susan Richmond is here if anybody has any questions for her, but she doesn't have to speak either, so whichever, whichever you prefer. And we just need a motion and a second.
Move approval?
Second.
All right. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Susan Richmond, was it, was it, I don't have any questions for you. I just wanted to state, was it three years ago, you and I, four years ago? Gosh, time flies. You and Doc Brown and I, we sat down and you guys presented the, a plan that looked pretty similar to this and it's been tweaked and you've listened to community members and employees and museum patrons and this, this is, this has exceeded my expectations thus far and I know it's just going to continue to do that. What a great partnership we have with this one of a kind museum. And I appreciate all of your hard work and your dedication and your board's hard work and dedication. This is something that is near and dear to me, not only because it's in Zone Two, but because our World War II veterans came back and built this museum and this project. Because back in those days, when they came back from a war, they thought, what do we need to do to help our community free of charge? And it has the wonderful names of all Ormond Beach residents that participated in the war and helped out on this project when you walk in those front doors. That's special. It's also special to me because as a child, I played in those gardens when I left school in the afternoon with my friends. It's special because my son Wyatt went there and fed turtles and counted turtles and chased lizards. It's really an incredible project and if you can't tell, Mr. Mayor and Commission, I'm going to be voting in approval of this tonight because it just makes sense. And when you look at these signs with the artist rendering here, it's, it's not offensive. In fact, I would say it's classy. And I'm pleased this before us and hopefully it'll go quicker from here on out. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Commissioner Persis?
Yes, Susan, I just want to say I'm so happy that you're here and so happy that you can tell we all are so very thrilled about this new building that's coming. And you know, I just wanted to say, I know the hard work that Susan and all the board members have put in. I'm very good friends with many of the women and other people on the board and it's tireless working. It's hours and hours of working and coming up with ideas and changing it and looking at it and coming up with a better idea. And as Deputy Mayor Kent pointed out, it is a classy building. It is going to add to Ormond Beach. It's going to be just wonderful. I'm so excited. And I just want to say, the Ormond Memorial Arts Museum and Gardens and like the Garden Club of Ormond Beach, you all always put together such a beautiful presentation. It's well done. It's classy. It's thoughtful. All your Ts are crossed, your Is are dotted. You know, you're just a wonderful group of hardworking people who care about our city and I'm just so, just so proud of all the work you're doing and I can't wait to see that building.
Well, thank you so much for the kind words. We're really excited. We're a little nervous, but we can't wait to see the building either. The volunteers who have, since 1946, since the end of World War II, what's kept it going has been volunteers working with the city. It's just an amazing partnership. As Troy said, it's an amazing partnership. One of our volunteers, our board president Lisa Perry is here tonight. I did just want to confirm that the historic parts of the building, we are very proud of those buildings that were built predominantly by veterans coming, our local veterans who came back from World War II. Those are being preserved. They're being rehabbed inside so that we can do things like wifi and humidity control. We're going to give them a little spruce up and that part will be, will be preserved. And if I could give a shameless plug, because I'm thinking about our veterans, we are going to have our annual Veterans Day tribute this year. That is on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. It will be November 11th at 11:00 a.m., but we're doing it drive-in style this, this year. People are going to come in their cars. It'll be simulcast on the radio and instead of doing it in our parking lot, which might be a little too small, it will be in the parking lot of Grace Lutheran Church on the corner of A1A and Neptune. So I just wanted to invite anyone who would like to come or who'd like to listen at home.
Awesome. Thank you. Very good. Colby, with that, I'll ask you to please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And eight E.
Resolution number 2020-138, a resolution authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a special exception regarding the mobile convenience store located at 5 South Young Street to allow an electronic changeable copy signage for the retail prices of gasoline, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2020-138, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. And again, we go to Stephen Spraker, Planning Director.
Good evening. This is a special exception at the corner of US One and Granada. This is the site almost everyone passes every day. There are two existing site signs. This site sign was issued a special exception for the height to get it over the traffic cabinet. The goal of the application is to take those signs and make them electronic changeable copy signs. The city amended our land development code to allow these signs. The Wawa was the first one. The process established was to go through this public hearing process for each sign. The calculations of the signage are listed here. They are 15% of the site, or I'm sorry, the sign with approximately two square feet for the regular and diesel gas square footage for a total electronic changeable copy sign of five square feet. The other sign is also under the requirement of 60%. They're at 48%. The total electronic changeable copy area will be 8.66 square feet. The planning board did review this on August 13th, recommended approval, seven to zero, and staff is also recommending approval.
Thank you, Stephen. I don't have any cards. Commissioner Persis?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you, I know with the Wawa sign, we had the, when it changed, I think Commissioner Selby mentioned it when we were talking about the Wawa sign, like every seven seconds, so it wasn't like flashing all the time. I can't remember exactly how, what it was. You might remember, Commissioner Selby?
I was going to, I was going to ask the same question. What's the, what's the minimum interval, Stephen?
Yeah.
Like 12 hours, isn't it?
Twice a day or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me look it up. I think it's in the packet, but let me look it up.
I mean, we call it changeable copy, but the reality is, it's like, I think you're right, Mayor. I think it's twice a day.
Oh, it was twice.
Once every 12 hours. I mean, it's.
I believe it's six, but let me take a look.
Okay, well, six hours.
Yeah, I thought it was more, yeah, I thought it was more than that.
Yeah, but the point is, I mean, it's not something that's going to flash or move or rotate.
Right, correct.
Oh, it just, it eliminates the need for these, you know, numbers that you go out there, a guy has to go out there and hang them on there. It's going to look classier.
Six hours.
Six hours.
Four times a day.
Yep, it's in, it's in the developmental order also.
Great.
Perfect. That's perfect.
Any other questions for Stephen? Putting him on the spot tonight. Sorry.
But I'll just say this, even though he's put on the spot, those of you that don't know or listening online or couldn't see, you've got Colby up here who is like a word shark who reads every word of every agenda and she's whispering to him, six hours. Six, six hours. I love that you knew it. I love it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being on top of your game.
Backing him up. I just need a motion and a second.
I'll move this.
Second, resolution.
All right. Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we will close the public hearings, move to reports, suggestions and requests and and start with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And indeed, Colby is a word shark. She does an amazing job with that agenda. It's not just that she does all the paperwork or the electronic stuff. She reviews every agenda. She tracks down every attachment. She polices every typo. It's just, she's remarkable. So we're very lucky to have her.
Thank you.
And Cassidy as well. She has a great team up there. Just a couple of notes for you tonight. For your calendar, you have your next meeting on October 6th. And then October 20th, we're back to our Tuesdays, regular meetings. And then Wednesday, November 4th, because Election Day is Tuesday. And then November 17th is your organizational meeting for the new commission. Tuesday, December 1st.
What was organizational? What's that date?
Uh, that's Tuesday, the 17th at 6:00 p.m.
No.
November.
November.
November 17th.
November, okay.
Yep.
Thank you, I got it. Okay, thank you.
November 17th, 6:00 p.m. And then December 1st is your, I don't know, we're having an advisory board workshop.
Yep, that's when they nominate the advisory board because their terms expire in January.
Yeah. And Colby does a great job with that. So start thinking, everybody of nominations, everybody that's running for election and currently here. And then the commission meeting that night. So we've had some uptick in our, or downtick in our unemployment, whichever way you want it. It's in a positive trend. August was 6% and is down 3% from July. So July's unemployment rate was 9.1 in Volusia, in Ormond Beach. In April, the city's unemployment was 15, employment was 15,945. Since then, we've added 2,500 jobs. So the city's employment is currently at 18,374. And again, upward trend in that. Let's see, we've had a couple of, the Ormond Beach Sports Complex championship field is almost complete, so we're, or is complete. So when the time gets right and we're not socially distanced, we'll do a grand opening of that. We're undergrounding utilities at the Nova Community Park. That's in its final phase. We've got some improvements to water and wastewater treatment. We've had, as you know, this weekend, we had a lot of rain. And then on top of that, we had king tide and those northeastern winds that blew the, the river up and flooded some areas. Sean is here, if you have any particular questions from him. But as you know, you all approved his stormwater master plan. And so staff had been very diligent this weekend going out and mapping those locations, photographing those locations. They met with certain people that were in trouble spots and got their information. I know you all know Mrs. Tador. We touched base with her and folks on that street. We had a house on John Anderson that had flooded, but that was mostly because of rain and it was down in a, kind of a dip. So no, no water got in the structure, got in the garage, but none got in the house. So we're closely monitoring those issues and taking good pictures so that we can use that as we move forward in that stormwater master planning process. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Joyce?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Kent.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought this up because I was going to talk about it and I will talk about it during my comments in just a few moments here. But major mad props to your Public Works Department because I know that they were working 24/7 for at least, I would say, four days, but probably more like six with the aftermath and the preparation beforehand. You know, for people that aren't from this area, you know, and a guy that grew up surfing here, a northeaster comes through and it gives you the best surf in the wintertime and it's usually maybe a day of wind. I mean, this, this was pretty incredible to have four solid days of 20 to 30 mile per hour winds at times. But my question specifically is South Arbor Drive.
Yes.
And I'm going to hone in on, on an area in my district. And, you know, I, I had some calls from some constituents. I received some pictures. And this has been a problem area. You know, this, this is an area that has been problematic. And when, when the rain stopped for a couple of days and the water was receding, there was still a problem in, in that area. I, I don't, I'm not for sure, so I'm, I'm not going to say 100%, but I don't believe any, any water got in anybody's homes. But I know that it was 10, 15 feet up into their yards. And I know that we talked about, because you and I were in communication about this, that this is on the master plan for, I believe, is it 22 or 21? Mr. Finley, is he here?
I'm here.
Arbor Drive, when, when is that on the master plan to get some serious help in that area?
This year.
This year?
This year. It's one of the items that was included in the master plan. We've asked them to give us a recommendation for the pipe sizing as quickly as they can. It's included in, every year we have, in addition to our, our pipelining, we have stormwater reconstruction projects. This, that is this year's stormwater reconstruction project. So we're estimating about $200,000. We'll do that project.
Right.
We're hoping to get that recommendation. Right now, it's, it's a, it's a 15-inch pipe that goes down that street. It may be a little bit undersized in addition to being aged. We want to make sure we put the right size pipe in there when we go in there.
Absolutely.
And so we're getting that recommendation from them. It's a simple design. We're going to do that, we'll do that design in-house. We'll get it put out to bid. Everything ticking along, we will probably put that out to bid right after the first of the year, get improvements made in the spring, so that way we're, we're ready for rainy season next year.
So that was my question. When, when will we be shovel-ready? And I just heard that. And when will it be completed? And you're telling me if all goes well, spring.
It should be, it, a project of that nature is, is about 120 to 150-day project. Getting it, at this point, we will get, if we get a recommendation from them October 1st sometime here, we'll get the design complete November. We'll submit it for, for, for commission disposition to advertise. We got, we got the holidays in there. We got one meeting in December. So probably you'll, you'll see it for disposition in, in first meeting of the January. That'll get us ready to go for, for March or April.
Mr. Finley, I love that you thought it out. You've got it down to the exact meeting and I'm appreciative of that. But I'm not nearly as appreciative as the residents that live on South Arbor Drive are, are going to be appreciative. And, and I just asked Ms. Shanahan that you help us get the word out to those residents that help is coming. The cavalry's been called and, and we are going to make sure this gets taken care of. Mr. Mayor and Commissioner Littleton, this area, when we get that amount of rain, reminds me of the rain event we had, I believe, 2009 over in, in your zone, Commissioner Littleton. And, and the city did a heroic job creating ideas and implementing plans to connect lakes in our Central Park, Commissioner Littleton. And, and we've not had, thank goodness, an event like that, but we've also not had the flooding like that. So Ms. Shanahan, I am pleased to hear that news from Mr. Finley because that's about a year earlier than what I thought I read. So I was, I was prepared to beg and plead with this commission to do everything we could to move it up, but I don't have to. I'll save that one for another day.
And if I might, Deputy Mayor and the commission, you all are very proactive when it comes to these types of issues. You spoke about the flood of 2009, the no-name storm with 36 inches in, in like three and a half days. Not three weeks later, we had you directing us to get a stormwater master plan study for that area. We got over $4 million worth of grants to raise Hand Avenue, interconnect, interconnect those lakes, put some pumping stations in, and we fixed that problem. So we do hear what you say and you're very responsive to the residents and we really appreciate that.
And Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we went up and Congressman Mike at the time gave us a ton of help on that project, did he not?
I, I believe so. I mean, there has not been a single house that's flooded in that zone or had water in it since that date as a result of that. And that's been the big success story. I mean, men, men plan and God laughs, they say. But luckily, with some smart engineers, some hard work as far as fundraising at the federal level from the commission and a little bit of good luck, it's all worked out so far. And, and that project is not complete. I mean, there's going to be a, a new pipe that will allow us to pump those lakes down quicker and add additional storage capacity in the event of some huge rain events like this. That's, that's coming. So we're looking forward to.
We've actually got two projects that, that remain. There's a, there's a small project in Fleming Avenue that's some, some localized drainage. And then our big, we call it the Big Fleming Project, which is, is, is that, that forest main that goes out, which is really nearing the end of, the completion of that design. We're permitting it through DOT to get us across US One right now. So baby steps get us there and, and we just appreciate, appreciate everybody's patience as we follow the process to do that.
That's a grant-funded project, isn't it?
They're both grant-funded projects, yes.
Great. Mr. Mayor, can I ask another question?
Deputy Mayor.
Your mind really quickly. So since we're talking about, you know, the water and the rain we had and the tremendous wind, Ms. Shanahan, can you or Mr. Finley give the commission an update? I know we got a, a brief email about our break wall here. I was shocked to drive, to drive over the bridge and look over and see that it was almost completely underwater. I was like, yikes, do we need to go another two feet, you know, on it? And is that something we're allowed to do? I just thought, you know, underwater, it might not be doing the job we thought it was going to do. And I get it. I understand. We had a, quite a few things happening at the same time, tides, rain, wind, you know. I mean, there were a couple of extreme things happening there. But that was a concern of mine. And then, and then secondly, where are we in the, in the, the planning, thought process, discussion of moving our, our bait shop and we're elevating it? When have we talked about this? Can you, can you talk about those?
Well, he can talk about the breakwater, the bait shop and the restrooms. I think they're in this next, this week. So we should be seeing that this next, this week.
I, I appreciate that because we, we have a, you know, we, we've got Mr. Leary who's not, not only the, the owner of that wonderful bait shop, but he, he's also an ambassador and has been, you know, even before he had the title of ambassador. And I appreciate that he's here tonight and he's able to hear, you know, the process of that. So, thank you.
Two, two quick things. As far as the breakwater, it doesn't, it, there's no, there's nothing that says we can't go over it. It's still doing the job. It's still dissipating energy, still, still create, still creating some protection of that, of that boat launch. An unexpected consequence of doing it, it gives us a whole new benchmark of how high the, how high the river is rising. So we can now say, gosh, it's, it's over. It's down. It's, we've been able, it's been kind of fun driving over the bridge, I hate to say, watching it go up and down a little bit. We've, we've noticed from some of our monitoring and that opiate system that we've introduced to you a, a couple of times here, we've been able to watch specifically Wilmette, where we've got a stream gauge there. We watched it and it, it jumped up dramatically on Saturday between about 3:00 and 7:00 o'clock, jumped up about a foot and a half.
Well, we only had between 12:00 and noon and 4:00 p.m., we only had like six and three-quarters inches of rainfall.
Six and three-quarters of an inch, which, which over that three, three hours.
Incredible.
An intensity of two inches of rain is, is, is a DOT 100-year storm intensity. So that, that's, that's what we got hit with real hard here. But we also had that king tide that was keeping it in, which kept that, that elevation, that elevated tide in the river i, in, in those low-lying areas in, in Laurel Creek, which is where we've got the stream gauge. It kept it up and finally started easing down this afternoon. We saw it drop about a half a foot this afternoon at Wilmette. So that's, that's encouraging for us to be able to, to see that. And it's, it's one of those tools that we have to be able to, to tell. And it's, the, is, Cassin Park, if Ike's around afterward, I'll, I'll touch base with you, Ike. We've got those, that, that proposal for design ready to go and you should see it in, in upcoming meeting here. You know, if not, I don't think it's next meeting, but I think it's the one after that that you'll see that.
Great, thank you.
Nevermind.
Very good. Okay. Thank you, Joyce. Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, just, while on that topic, I wanted to, we've had some discussion about Woodridge and Beach Street. You know, that's where we, you know, where the, that homeowner floods every time because they're in that low spot there. And so is there any, is there such a thing as like a backflow valve on a, on a collection?
There are, there is. And we had a project that we put in, I believe it was, it was either after Matthew or after Irma, where we put in for a FEMA Hazard Vindication Grant Program grant to put those exact things there. They used to be called duck bills and they'd fit on the outside. The, the common one was that fit on the outside and it would open up as, as water come through. The more preferred one goes actually inside the pipe so that it, as, as the water comes, it, it kind of drops, drops it. We had, we have a grant. We've been, I think it's, we're in the process of getting, finalizing the execution of it that will put them on every single outfall that we have both, on both sides of the river. So it took a little bit of, of finagling with, with FEMA to be able to show that we justified it. They, they want to see a positive, a, a, a benefit cost ratio of over one. And so we needed to show that for them. And so we're, we're in the final, final stages of showing that justification for that, for that and, and where we need to put those. I don't know if we ended up, at the end of the day, going to be, be able to put them on all of them, but the majority of them and those, those ones that affect those low-lying areas where we can show that the tide coming in, those heavy rains, that there is a damage to, to, a potential damage to property, those are the ones that, that we're going to secure in there. So that will be coming up hopefully in the very near future here as well.
So that would be in the outfalls that are actually in the intercoastal?
Correct.
Okay.
Intercoastal, and I think a, a little bit, I think there is one or two behind the PAC in that, in, in that Strickland Creek. I think there's one or two.
Okay.
In that area too. But mostly on the intercoastal, this side of the river as well as the, as well as the east side of the river.
Well, it might only be specific to this Woodridge home that you and I have had numerous conversations about. But because they're in a low spot there, I think you're getting water that's coming downhill, you know, from the west and coming up in the Catch Basin, you know what I mean? Because it can't flow, it can't keep flowing to the outflow.
And we've, we've had some, we actually had, Zepf and Associates do a study of that area.
Right.
We had a design. We've had some challenges being able to implement that design, specifically the acquisition of some easements.
Right.
That doesn't mean that we are abandoning hope for that one. We've asked, I know that we, I know that we're putting a lot on the shoulders of this, of the consultant who's doing this stormwater master plan. We've got these couple different problem areas. That's one of the problem areas that we've asked them to take a look from a different perspective of how we can achieve helping that, that, that area out.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And then the other comment I wanted to make was that, Ms. Shanahan, I just wanted to thank you for jumping on that John Anderson, you mentioned a John Anderson homeowner that is low, they're, they know it, their house is below the road. But the point I wanted to say about that was that a couple of years ago, I was at their home and, and the city has actually installed a year or so before that, a Catch Basin on the adjoining neighbor's property. So water can flow down off of their property on a, a low spot and the neighbor's property and then vacate that way. So we already had addressed, I mean, he's got a bad situation because he's so, he's in kind of a hole right there. And it's, you know, I mean, I don't know, I was a boy scout and you never pitch your tent in a low spot, you put it on the high spot. So I don't know. Some people surprise me, but.
And staff went out there with a pump and helped pull that water down, so.
And the homeowner was very appreciative because I had additional communication with him. So I just, you know, and, and also commented on the demeanor of our staff also. They were very helpful and, you know, respectful and so forth. So that's, it makes people feel good when they get that kind of service. Yeah. So thank you.
If I might add, we had, we did one other thing. If I may add, we did one other thing. I stopped by on Sunday to talk to Mr. Smento.
Okay.
When we were out there, the waters were starting to recede. What we did on Monday, and I asked him and his neighbor to both do me two things, not to clean up too much. He had that silt line that was coming up the side of the house. There's a silt line on the driveway of the neighbor next door. We went out there and surveyed those. That way, we can, again, those were some of the points where we were trying to document, trying to memorialize where they were. So, that way, in the event that they seek as a homeowner for some grant assistance to make some improvements to their property, we've got that information that we can do and help them with some future improvements.
Very good. Thank you.
Good deal. Thank you, Sean. Anyone else on flooding issues? And we'll move to City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing this evening.
Thank you, Randy. And tonight, we start with Deputy Mayor Kent.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Shanahan, if you just please tell all the public works how much I appreciate their hard work. I would appreciate that. And to Colby, you are excellent. You are excellent at what you do, day in and day out. And, you know, I told Colby this, and I told Joyce this, but I'll say it publicly. Colby worked for us years ago, left us, and I...
Expert.
Okay. Well, Joyce, you get the credit, but I didn't know if you were playing the lottery or what. But, Colby made her way back here and just continues to be an excellent addition to our city. So, Colby, thank you.
Thank you.
Talked about the breakwall, Randy Crabtree. You're always, you love your city. You always show up, and I'll ask you sometimes, was there something, you know, you came out about, something bothering you? And you usually tell me the same thing. No, I just want to check on my city and make sure everything's going well. So, I appreciate seeing you here. And last but not least, where's our Chief of Police? You over there? Our Fire Chief as well. So, I had a message today, Ms. Shanahan, from Janet Ivanhoe, owner of the Rockin Ranch. And anybody that knows Janet knows she loves dogs. I mean, is, I thought that, you know, my family and I were dog lovers, but I mean, she's probably more of a dog lover than we can be, which I don't know how is possible, but, you know, she is. And her message was that she wants to make sure that our two police dogs have protective vests. And she wants to purchase protective vests for our dogs. So, I'll get you Ms. Ivanhoe's information, and if you and the Chief can give her a call. She was pretty adamant about it on her message. So, I don't know what she saw or what got her thinking about it, but it just goes to show the great residents we have in Ormond Beach that want to help, and they help in different ways. And in this way, it's a resident who is a business owner, who wants to buy our police dogs protective vests, because she does not want them getting harmed in any way, shape, or form. And with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, Commissioner Persis.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I have some good news. Our IT Director Ned Huda, who is on vacation right now, well, his daughter, whom I hired her first job at Pine Trail Elementary, received the Volusia County First Year Teacher of the Year Award for, you know, Volusia County. She's an ESE teacher, which is an exceptional education student, special education teacher. And that's not always an easy job. Takes a lot of patience. It takes a lot of smarts, and it takes just a lot of working with a lot of different people to get those kids to be successful. And she's clearly doing it. I'm not surprised, but I just want you all to pass on to Ned that we're just very, very proud of Lauren. She's, you know, she's a shining star. And I just want to also, on the mention of schools and teachers and students, schools opened August 31st, so they've been open about four weeks. And there's only been between 40 and 50 cases of COVID in Volusia County schools, which, considering all the kids and all the teachers and parents and everybody that comes in there, that's not a huge number. We wish we had zero, but, you know, we have had some, and they take care of it. They're quarantined. They can't come back. It's all done very well. I have actually visited several schools on the east and west side in the past last couple of weeks, and schools look so different. You know, everybody has a mask on. The kids have dividers, clear plastic dividers by their desks. The secretaries all have dividers. It's just very different. Parents are not on campus. There's no parents walking around like there used to be. And it needs to be that way for now. But, it's just very different. But, I know that they're all working hard to keep the kids safe, and it makes me feel good that, you know, in our schools right here in Ormond Beach are doing that as well. Unfortunately, I had the, I know you all heard about the Pear Professional who used to work at Pine Trail, and she moved on to another school. She passed away from COVID at age 40 a couple of days ago, and her brother passed away like the following day. I'm sure you heard it on the news. But, she worked with me for five years at Pine Trail. She was a wonderful person. So, I just don't want anyone out there in the city of Ormond Beach or any of you all to be too complacent about this COVID, you know, disease, because it is out there. It is serious, and we do need to keep, you know, following the procedures that we have put in place, masking up, backing up, you know, staying at a good distance away from people, six feet, you know, when possible. We just need to keep doing that and taking care of our loved ones. So, with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Persis. Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing for tonight, so good night.
Very well. And Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. Just three quick things. First of all, thank you to the school board for getting the schools open and doing it in a safe manner. That's something that you all probably got tired of hearing me, you know, encourage to have happen. But, I really appreciate that. I think it's the right move, and I think it's good for our families and good for the businesses also, because it allows the working parents to get back to work. Ms. Shanahan, I had a question for you that I neglected to ask earlier. Do you know when the automated signals on Granada will be operational? I know they've been working on them. I've seen them installing.
Next year. The end of this year.
Maybe day project? I was thinking it was before the end of this...
That's what I...
Do you know when that's?
Adaptive signalization? I spoke to the contractor a week and a half ago. Their contract is, it gives them until the end of January to get it completed. They're hoping to be, have it ready by end of November.
And will it be operational right away?
That, yeah. They're looking to be substantially or finally complete, you know, before the holidays. So, until end of November, first of December.
Okay. And then, does everybody on the commission, do we get one of those clickers, so we can change the light?
Just me.
When we're half a block away?
Yes.
And we know? Okay, good. Oh, just Sean. Okay. All right. Thank you. So, the final thing I have, you all have a package up here. This came out of TPO today. This is, and I wanted us to talk about, or at least, I wanted to share this with you. This is the USBR-1, United States Bicycle Route System for US-1. And it's the, this particular route goes from Key West to like Maine or something. I mean, the goal is to cover the entire east coast of the United States. And this is targeted at bicyclists who travel by bicycle. Okay? So, in other words, you carry all your luggage on your bike. And it's not a trail, okay? It's a route. In other words, they don't need, you know, they're primarily traveling on either on existing roads, okay? Not, there's not, it doesn't require the construction of a 10- or 12-foot wide trail like we're familiar with some of the trails that we've built and that are being built around the county. But, here's the thing that I found interesting about it, was the, it's called the US-1 Trail, but through Volusia County, I don't think it's on US-1 at all, actually, because it starts, it enters Volusia County at the north on A1A, and then it comes down to High Bridge Road, goes west on High Bridge. This is the proposed route, okay? West on High Bridge to John Anderson, south on John Anderson to Granada, over the bridge, west on Granada, and then south on Beach Street to Holly Hill. And then, goes on from there. And it's a, we have, we are considered a route owner, I think, for those streets that are our streets. And so, they don't dictate to us the route. This is a route that they're proposing at this point. It used to be on A1A all the way from Flagler County to ISB. But, now, this change is to make it a little more scenic and, you know, make the ride more interesting, and also on what they consider to be a safer road, A1A, you know, John Anderson versus A1A. But, here's my concern. My concern is that I want to make sure that our residents know about this and that they're okay with it, you know? Because, you know, I don't, well, I don't anticipate a tremendous amount of traffic from this, you know? The fact that it's, you know, traversing John Anderson and then Beach Street for, you know, several miles, obviously, the residents of those areas may have some concerns about that. And it is, there are obviously some benefits. There's some ecotourism out of this. I mean, these people, you know, they're going for multiple-day trips. So, some of them will stay in hotels, and will dine in our restaurants, and, you know, how many? I don't know. I can't speak to that. But, there is an association. This is sponsored by an organization called Adventure Bicycling, I think it's called, Adventure Cycling Association, that has 50,000 or 60,000 members. So, it's not insignificant. So, anyway, so I wanted to bring that up, because I think the challenge for us is, how do we get the word out? How do we let people know that this is being proposed? And then, how do we get citizen input on it to make sure that there aren't, you know, a bunch of people that subsequently say, why in the world did you let that happen? You know? I mean, I, you know, it's just, I just think they, you know, in this organization, they say right in this package on page 96, I think it is, 96, "Local agencies have the final say, so when they request a change to the route, it is accepted slash negotiated." So, I don't know that we necessarily do have the final say, you know? Anyway, that's my point, is this was something that I really felt like, you know, and it's really kind of a challenge to staff, how do we get the word out? And what do we do to, you know, to get public comment on this? I think it has a potential to be amazing. I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm not a big, I never really thought about taking a long trip on my bicycle, you know, on my beach cruiser, but maybe with some saddlebags, you know, and a little more comfortable seat, I might do it.
I think this is a good candidate for something for Jen to reach out.
That's great idea.
You know, I think that she can put it on the website, put it on the splash page, get to the front door, give people a chance to give some input. You know, number one, it's a good thing that's coming through here. These trails, these bike routes are encouraging, and then maybe give some awareness to them that there is something out there that they can travel, and if they are a bike rider, bike beyond the city of Ormond Beach and expand it. So, you know, we've got a couple different of these trails that I mentioned to you. There's River Sea Trail. There's the East Coast Greenway Trail. This one hasn't reached out to us, and it doesn't look like they're going to reach out to us to make any capital improvements, to make any structural improvements, putting in a trail, putting in a bike path, putting in anything, you know, hard, vertical construct or, you know, on the ground. It's just a route for people to use. So, I think that that's a positive in a lot of ways. But, I will reach out to the gentleman who's the contact person, let him know, you know, what we're doing and get a little bit more information. That way, we can craft a good outreach to our residents.
Yeah. And, you know, a social media campaign is a great idea, but I also want to make sure that the residents of the streets, that the route is actually going to go down, are aware of it, you know, and that they're given the opportunity to share their thoughts on it.
I think Jen can do a directed...
Right. Right. Okay.
Commissioner Persis.
I was just wondering if this organization, if someone's going to like take a trip on their bike, do they have to let this organization know, hey, we're going to ride from Miami up to Georgia or all the way to Maine? I mean, wouldn't they check in? It just seems like someone would need to know where they are at all times.
Yeah. I don't think so. It's all GPS-driven.
Uh-huh.
I mean, you, basically, the route will be on, you know, on interactive, not on interact, on a map, you know, that you just pull down, and then you just follow the route with your GPS on your mobile device or whatever. And it's kind of cool, too, because it not only has the map route, the street route, but it also has the elevation changes in it. So, you can see what, you know, what's coming up, or uphill, downhill, you know, whatever. Exactly. Yeah. Take a break. Have another Diet Coke.
Deputy Mayor Kent.
Thank you. Commissioner Selby, thank you for bringing this to our attention. And as you were talking, I was like, man, you're just, you're saddled with too much common sense. I mean, you know, for you to want to make sure our residents that will be affected by the route, I'm appreciative of you bringing this forward, because if not, this possibly could have flown under the radar. And here's the route, and, you know, hey, there it is, you know? We sent something to the city, so I publicly thank you for that. And I'm pleased to hear that staff has a plan in place, not just with social media, but to actually contact those individuals. Because if we don't, we know exactly what's going to happen. And we're going to get those questions. And, you know, I know that I always like to have a good answer for those tough questions. And the good answer here is, we reached out to you, or the homeowner that was there at the time. So, thank you.